Please oversight.
Mayor, council members, as staff comes up, I just want to provide a little bit of context. As you are aware, I sent a memo out last week providing an overview of where we are in the broader context of negotiations with APA. Today's presentation is really focused on a resolution that was passed back in March on oversight efforts and research that is being conducted by the Office of Police Monitor. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Farah, our interim police monitor, to walk us through the work that she has done since that resolution was passed.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Farah Muskinen. I'm the interim police monitor. Just want to go over the presentation outline. Today, we're going to discuss the resolution as the city manager just mentioned, an overview of some of my preliminary research, which would include the oversight models, some preliminary observations, and next steps in the timeline. If you recall, on March 22nd, council approved, passed a resolution directing the city manager to look into evidence-based best practices in oversight. And that resolution included consultation with various stakeholders, including the police department, interested community organizations, and commissions. When, shortly after the resolution passed, I reached out to NACO. NACO is the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, and they are experts in this field and provided a lot of guidance to me in this research. And throughout their publications, NACO talks about jurisdictions focusing on best fit as opposed to best practices when structuring their oversight. You may recall the 21st Century Policing Recommendations. It was a task force created by President Obama in 2015. And in Pillar Two, discussed policy and oversight. And specifically, they discussed that every community should define the appropriate form and structure of civilian oversight to meet the needs of that community. Furthermore, Brian Buckner, the former president of NACO, he testified before the policing task force, and he said, "Citizen review is not an advocate for the community or for the police. This impartiality allows oversight to bring stakeholders together to work collaboratively and proactively to make policing more effective and responsive to the community. Civilian oversight alone is not sufficient to gain legitimacy. Without it, however, it is difficult, if not impossible, for the police to maintain the public's trust." NACO surveyed 97 civilian oversights across the country. And then they were able to find five common goals of civilian oversight programs. Those include improving public trust, ensuring accessible complaint processes, promoting thorough, fair investigations, increasing transparency, and deterring police conduct, NACO also defines three types of models. Those include the investigative model. The investigative model is where a civilian investigates complaints of police misconduct. The review-focused model is that where civilians review the thoroughness of the internal affairs investigation. Second, thirdly, we have the auditor-monitor model. And those either audit, in its literal sense, or monitor, in its literal sense, investigations by internal affairs, and they review broad patterns of investigations, findings, and discipline. I also added a additional model, which is the hybrid model, which is a combination of the three above. When I reached out to various cities across the country, I wanted to look at certain factors in those cities. And those include the type of oversight model they fell into, the length, the time of the agency existed, the city's population, the size of the police department, the city's median, resident median income, and how the oversight agency was created, for example, the legal authority of such. And in my research, I spoke to 28 oversight agency directors, and they fall in these respective areas: 14 investigative, that oversee investigative agencies; 17 that are review-focused; five auditor-monitor; and two hybrid. I additionally spoke to the NACO Research Fellow, two consultants, two board chairs of BART. BART is the Bay Area Rapid Transit System. I spoke to the chair of the Dallas Police Oversight Board, and then the board liaisons to the Houston and San Antonio respective oversight boards. And then, lastly, the NYPD Inspector General, Phil Yor. He's the former president of NACO and also the former oversight director in Washington, DC. And this is just a visual of the cities by models that I talked to across the country. This is approximately maybe 20% of the models across the country. There are probably just about over 150. Next, I want to go to and discuss some preliminary observations. Obviously, as you know, state laws vary, and most of the jurisdictions and the agencies that I spoke to don't have a statute like 143, which has some legal restrictions that we face that other jurisdictions do not. Most, if not all, of the agencies that I spoke to were created by charter, ordinance, or state statute. Some examples: Seattle and Albuquerque, they will negotiate components of their oversight in their collective bargaining agreement, that discipline and the length of the term of the investigations. Denver specifically delineates what can and cannot be part of a collective bargaining agreement, and in their ordinance, they specifically prohibit oversight from being part of the collective bargaining agreement. And then, of course, here in Texas, charter and ordinance cannot supersede state law. The funding for the oversight agencies varied, but many of them were funded by percentage, as a percentage of the police department, their respective police departments, in that range from a half a percent to a percent. The next observation is regarding the 180-day rule. I think most of you are aware that with Chapter Local Code 143, investigations and discipline have to be imposed within the 180-day. Out of the 28 that I spoke to, none of them had this type of timeframe in which they had to impose discipline. The civilian overboards were really across the board. They consisted of anywhere between nine and 23 members. Some were appointed by the mayor and approved by council. And the time commitment was pretty surprising when I spoke to some directors. They talked about, on average, it's 30 to 40 hours a month, which is significant, particularly on a volunteer basis. And so part of them started a rotation, oh, sorry, a rotation of working in panels of three to five, so that they could rotate the workload of the volunteer panels. Discipline: most jurisdictions provide recommendations as to discipline, but it was pretty consistent that the final determination was with the chief of police. Staffing ranged from two to 15. However, I just want to add a little outlier: City of Chicago's oversight has over 145 employees. So that was, that's an extreme situation. Most of them fall between two and 15 staff people. And the complaints ranged from 30 to 1,500, and it really depended on the model with the complaints and whether or not they reviewed internal and external complaints. Next steps: we will continue our research and analysis. At this point, we will probably engage our community stakeholders and organizations to discuss the research in more detail. And that will hopefully lead to determining what cities we want to do a deeper dive and look more closely into, and also finalizing the team that may do site visits or participate in video conferencing when we get to that stage. Next, we're going to develop a community outreach plan, because obviously, the community's input on this is going to be pretty significant. And that will be done simultaneously with legal review, because it's going to be important to determine what can be done independent of the meet-and-confer agreement. This is just a visual to show at my next presentation, a breakdown of the cities and some factors that I looked at in asking specific questions. For example, if they had a civilian board, if they have Sabina power, how are their discipline recommendations handled? So just that you'll have a preview of a visual that we'll bring to you in June. Our draft timeline: we plan to come back in June with a preliminary oversight report and the recommendations for the site visits and the site visit team. Then, in July, we'll either conduct those site visits or do the video conference. In August and September, again, simultaneously, will be the community outreach and the legal review with our commissions and stakeholders. And then, we hope to come back in October with a final report and recommendations for the council to consider. And I just want to leave you with this final quote: In my research, it was pretty consistent that, through the experts that I spoke to, the directors that I spoke to, that oversight is very specific to the community. And so I leave you with this: Given the differences between cities and counties in the US, it is likely that no single model of oversight will work for all jurisdictions. As a result, the best form of oversight for individual jurisdictions simply depends on the circumstances faced by the jurisdiction that is either creating or updating its oversight processes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I want to thank you for this work, and I think you've set it up really well. And I think what we can learn from other jurisdictions would be great, and I like the focus on finding something that may be unique to Austin but works for us. Obviously, with the conversations that we had in December, before we're able to move into a long-term contract with the police association, this work's going to have to be completed, so that anything that needs to be incorporated into the contract is able to be incorporated into the contract. The line that you had at the bottom of page 13, where you talk about deciding the process and then entering in bargaining over that in negotiations. My hope is that, as you pull this group together and you have the stakeholder groups, that lots of different groups in the city participate, most especially the police association, because we really need them at the table as we go through this process. My hope is, at the end of the day, that we're able to reach some kind of consensus where the community, including the association, has identified what it is that is the best practice for our city, the practice that keeps us safe and is best at maintaining trust and the other benefits that you talked about, so that we're not actually negotiating in a bargaining session for what is the best practice for our city. Best one, I hope that we have a consensus, and then that just gets incorporated into whatever is necessary to be in the contract in order to be able to affect that, so that we're not bargaining for the best policy or paying for the best policy, but rather, together, we've been able to reach that consensus. And I really hope the association and the whole community participates so that we can get to that place. Mr. Kassar, then Councilmember Poole.
Yeah, I also want to compliment all of the staff from the police department, the community groups, and your office in labor relations on this work so far, because I think, also speaking from the experience in December, that we really would benefit on something that's as high-profile as this issue locally and nationally, from very well-researched models across the country. So everybody know, so the council and the community can come to a consensus around which model we want, so that we can, because I think it's important for us to know what it is that isn't working and what is working best across the country. And I know our staff from all different departments work researching best practices across the country, but just from the looks of this presentation and how you've broken it out, it really does look like y'all have put in some very serious thought, and that's what's required for us to get this worked out right. And so I, this is really promising to me. Regardless of where people stand on the different issues and which model we land on, getting this level of categories of different review processes and really understanding how it works across the country, it just seems like y'all are going above and beyond on that. So I want to give you that compliment. And I do want to second what the mayor has said, which is that, my hope is that we can break away from the model in labor negotiations where we're bargaining over, where we're bargaining over what we see as just the best things for the city, and instead, that we really make sure our bargaining is targeted towards making, on those, making sure that we are keeping up with the labor market, that we're, you know, leading the market, in this case, on wages and benefits to attract the best, that we really try to bargain in those areas. Because when we start conflating too much how it is that we pay and treat our employees with what the appropriate oversight models are, that will earn broad community trust, I think we set ourselves up again for really challenging public hearings over pay and benefits versus community oversight. And I would really like for us to all try our best to agree on which models we want for oversight, and then be able to bargain in good faith over the best labor practices. And I think that this sets us up to do that, so I can be on the winning or losing end of different votes on community oversight, but then we can hopefully have a labor contract that is good for our officers and good for the city, while making sure we have a good community oversight process, the best that we can, in or outside of a contract. But I think that if we're going to get to that difficult goal, it seems like this level of research is necessary, so I appreciate us taking the time to do that between now and October.
Councilmember Poole.
Yeah, thanks for your continuing efforts, and I know this is probably the most complicated, complex, and multi-layered piece that you're working on. Will you be bringing us information when you come back after having done a survey of other practices in other cities, and show us where the city of Austin, what the city of Austin has done in the past, including its evolution to get to where we were last year, and then show any similarities or differences, or how much misaligned we may or may not be with the standards that you're going to bring to us that show areas where we think we need improvement?
Yes, so I've started that process of my synthesis of all the information that I've gotten from the 28 cities. And so I have done that. It's basically a comparative analysis with Austin, right? And so it is a little tricky. For example, let me just give you an example. San Diego has a review-focused board. They get in cases from internal affairs, and they review them, right? And they make their recommendations to the chief. So we would probably check the box for civilian board for San Diego. However, in Oakland, they have a police commission, which is civilian, appointed by the mayor, approved by council, but they only review cases of misconduct when there's a disagreement between the agency director, oversight agency director, and the chief of police. And it's a panel of three. So I could check the box technically for Oakland for having a civilian board, but you see, they operate completely different. So I will do a comparative analysis, but I'm going to have to explain it a little bit in detail, because it is layered, and it may give, I don't want to give misinformation, because it's not all, when you say civilian boards, they're not all created equal.
That's great, and comparative analysis is exactly, I think, what we need, and thank you for that, and I recognize that will take some time. We may even find that some of the practices and standards that we have been, that we have achieved and been working on here in Austin for many years are actually really good. And I think we've talked about how there isn't any other system like ours in the country, which is obviously why it was hard to find similar.
In the state. We're the only civilian police monitors office in the state of Texas.
Thank you.
But San Antonio, Houston, and Dallas have boards that review cases of misconduct. Our most similar, I call them our fraternal twin in terms of oversight, is Denver. They're very similar to our model, but I do want to say that the state law plays a significant role in this. So, for example, we are allowed to post our discipline, and we post it on our website. None of, there are several oversight agencies in California. They're not allowed to do that, based on the Peace Officer Bill of Rights. So state law plays a significant role in terms of what the oversight agency, their purview.
So I guess where I was going with all of that was just to say, we may have some really good elements already.
Yeah, we do.
That we have achieved here in Austin. And so I want to make sure that the ones that work here, that we know, and that have had good outcomes, that we don't inadvertently lose them, because maybe there's something else out there that sounds better, but we know that something has worked here.
Yeah.
So that'll be, that'll be part of the analysis that I hope you all will bring, will bring to us.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Councilmember Garza.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your, what you were saying. I was talking to staff, so I don't know if you talked about timeline of the contract or how this intersects with that, but I just want to remind everyone how, you know, that oversight plays a very important part of police accountability, so does how we hire our police officers. And without a contract, we are hiring our police officers based on a hundred-question test, and that is not the best way to hire our police officers. So whatever the, you know, next steps are, I hope we can get to some kind of, as you continue to do your work, I hope we get to some kind of interim process that allows us to have more flexibility in hiring, because a hundred-question test isn't the best way to determine who our police officers are.
Okay. In that regard, Councilmember Alder.
Did you want to?
I was going to say, just in that regard, because there's the kind of the overlay between what we're doing here and the police contract issue generally, managers send us something out that indicates that conversations are ongoing, but you don't anticipate being able to actually get into a long-term contract, which makes sense to me, because we have to resolve these kinds of issues. The council took action a month or so ago to extend some of the stipends, two of the stipends indefinitely, and five of the stipends for just a period of time running through the end of May. I signed an ordinance that was presented by staff to affect that, but it conflated those two groups accidentally. So I've just recently signed an amended, I guess, protongue corrective ordinance to make it clear that two of the stipends continue indefinitely, and only five of them stop at the end of May, as you continue in those negotiations. If there were colleagues that wanted to visit extending those five stipends further operationally, because of the operational benefit, I think, that the chief had indicated, I would join with colleagues to do that by IFC, but it would require an IFC for supplemental direction to do something like that.
Councilmember Alder.
I wanted to go back to the other conversation, if I might.
You can.
And I have a question on what you just talked about.
Go ahead.
So I want to go back to the oversight briefing, and thank you to your office for all your work, and I know you've spent a lot of, a lot of time and had a lot of really important conversations. I want to agree with Councilmember Kassar in the general direction of thinking about how we decouple what's appropriate pay for our police officer from the question of what is the oversight that we need. And I really appreciated your framing of this as that we need to do what's unique to Austin and what's right for our community. And I want to just remind us that we had a very long hearing, and we heard a lot of discontent in the community with the current process. So my hope is that we will move to evolve that process within the constraints that we face being in Texas, but that we will evolve and be creative to come up with a solution that fits, fits our community, and I appreciate that direction. I was curious, in this process, when the community will be able to provide input. We have a lot of people in our community who have been working really hard on these issues and have a lot of different ideas and have also been doing research, and I was wondering how that fits into the timeframe and your process, that community input.
So I, after the resolution was passed, I contacted every entity that was listed to say, this is the resolution's coming, I'm going to do some research and get back to you. But I really wanted to do some, this preliminary research first, just so that we had a footing and a basic understanding of oversight and what's out there. But the next step is community engagement, for sure, particularly with the organizations that were named specifically in the, in the resolution, and then also the Oversight Coalition, Community Coalition, and other stakeholders. So it is my, I wanted to do this presentation first and do the preliminary, have kind of the baseline preliminary information, and then reach out. I plan to reach out to various stakeholders and have meetings between now and then our next presentation. And then that is going to take another forum over the summer, when we do, you know, community more outreach and forums to get input on some recommendations before we come back to council.
Thank you. I, that's great. I hope that will be an extensive amount of community engagement with those folks who've been really focused on this issue. Can you tell me a little bit more about the visits that you have planned and how those be structured, and why those are necessary, and who's going to be going on those, and what you're hoping to accomplish with those visits?
So it's still being decided who, when, how, you know, all the details that you're asked, that you're asking. So with this preliminary research, I think that I have a better understanding of the oversight models across the country. And this is where the community engagement and stakeholder engagement is going to be important, because their input is going to be needed in terms of how we narrow it down. Because I spoke to 28 cities, but I don't expect us to visit 28 cities.
Right.
So I think that their input is going to help to wield it down to something more manageable, five or six, I'm just throwing that out there. And then a conversation of, you know, the pros and cons of actual site visits as opposed to maybe doing video conferencing with the various directors and their staff. And really, the point is to have the stakeholders get the information directly from the directors of the various oversight agencies, have the ability to answer questions, talk about the strengths and weaknesses of their models, because they, all of them can speak very, very in-depth about kind of their organizational structure, how they work, you know, some challenges that they're facing in their respective models. And I think it's important that, you know, the various stakeholders hear that from, you know, another messenger, not, aside from me, right? I can speak to those, but I think it's also good to hear it from the source. And so that work, I'm going to start, oh, I've started doing, but it will finalize this month, and then we'll come back to you in June with, these are the specific cities, this is the site visit team, and then the plan is to really actually do that in July.
Okay. I have some reflections on that that I don't need to go into now during work session, but would love to have a further conversation with you on that.
Okay.
And then the other question, and I'm not sure if this is for you or legal or the city manager, I have some questions with respect to 143 and what has to be within the contract and what doesn't, that seem to be legal of nature. I don't need to ask them today in executive session, but I would like an opportunity to have an executive session where we can focus on some of the legal issues with respect to 143 and what needs to be in the contract and what needs to be out of the contract. So if we could make that happen, maybe at a next council meeting or work session time period?
Okay.
Councilmember Devin, decide with the Labor Relations Office. Councilmember Alder, are you, when you asked that question, are you referring broadly to all 143 or just as it relates to oversight?
Definitely with respect to oversight, and I may have some other questions, and we'd be happy to work with you before the session to make sure you have a sense of the kinds of concern, so that you have an opportunity to be prepared for that. Certainly, I just don't have all of the questions.
Right, that's fine.
Today in front of me, to be able to share those.
And on a timing basis, you're saying you want it to happen quickly? And the reason you want to have that happen quickly, help me understand why you want to have that, just because there's lots of other stuff that?
Well, there's an underlying assumption here that we're moving forward with a model that has to be negotiated in the contract, and I have questions about whether the oversight model is, belongs in the contract or not, and I need to have those legal questions explored. And I think that the council, since this is key to those conversations, ought to have that conversation before we get too far in setting up a process. And I don't have the answers to my questions, so I don't.
I understand, thank you. Anything else on this? Yes.
Mayor, when you were talking about the five stipends that would expire on May 24, and I, I have a question, I guess either for legal or for our city manager. Would, is it, my question is, why would, why, does council have to bring that extension of those five stipends, or can that come from staff, since you all are the ones who are negotiating it and we are not? And if it is council, help me understand why, because I was thinking that that would be an action that staff could bring to us.
Mayor, council member, certainly, the original resolution came from council, and so if they were to be extended, the expectation would be that would come from council as well.
Okay, so you're saying, because it was originally begun with council, although there were elements of the contract negotiating that did come from staff, I just, all right. My point is that we are not the ones who are at the negotiating table, so we have not had anything really to do with the fact that the May 24 deadline is in front of us. I, possibly, we should not have made it such a short deadline, knowing, you know, how protracted these negotiations should be, and I think we should probably internalize that if we do extend it. But I can't help feeling partially that this would also be appropriate for staff to bring to council, as you are. As you are saying, we have not yet completed this. We understand that council wanted to continue these stipends. We thought at the time that May 24 would be sufficient amount of time. It's clear it is not. And so we are coming back to, in good faith, to say that we would like you to consider giving us additional time and allowing the stipends to continue.
So we've been noticed here on the police oversight issue, so not really an opportunity for us to discuss the merits of the stipend issue. I understand the question that you asked
So I would just put that question in.
And God gave him the chance to be able to answer that question. Anything else on police oversight? Yes, Mr. LeDoux.
What?
Go ahead.
I'll just remind my colleagues that that decision about extending those police stipends was the good-faith effort to sign an interim agreement, and the association came to the table and said, "No, they don't want an interim agreement. That's it." So there was the -- I agree with the manager, it's not appropriate for staff to bring this item up, because it was council making the policy decision in that context. So I think it's important to remember that those were not extended because we thought they were good. We extended them in order to get an interim, and the association said they didn't want an interim.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Engia.
You know, I want to support the extension, you know, because of what happened, you know, here last month, a couple months ago, when the bomber came and it distracted everybody, and, you know, we needed to catch this person, which we did, but it also stopped the negotiation. And I don't think it would be fair if we didn't extend the stipends.
All right, let's hold off further discussion about the stipend issue until it gets teed up for us and put on the agenda. Anything else on police oversight?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's have...